Welcome to the Lancaster City Council Meeting. The City Clerk?
Ready? Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Mann.
I am present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Ron Guthrie from Christian Life Assembly.
Let me hear it this way or that way.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank you. This is an honor and a privilege to be here. It's the first time I've ever prayed for a council meeting. So, this is a pleasure. And with your indulgence, I wrote my prayer out last night so I wouldn't forget it. So, as we pray, bow your heads, I'll follow my notes. Dear me, Father, First of all, I just want to thank you for all that are gathered here, Father. Father, I just want to thank you for the abundant blessings. Father, and I want to thank you for health. Health to do the assigned chores that we have, the tasks that we have, and the ability just to be involved in useful works. Father, in the Scriptures, you tell us that we're to honor our governing boards. And, Father, you have since established these authority in this assembly, Father, just to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for the mayor and this assembled council. I ask that you grant them wisdom to govern amidst conflicting interests and issues of our time, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together even where honest disagreement exists. And, Father, I just wish that you grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. Father, I lift up the agenda that is before them, benefit those who work and live in our great community of Lancaster. And, Father, I pray in the blessed name of Jesus Christ, amen.
And, tonight, we have the Buffalo...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's Nigel?
Nigel, where are you? You're in the wrong chair.
Wasn't in the chair, you were hiding. Each year, thousands of churches and civic organizations throughout the nation participate in Justice Sunday activities. Justice Sunday was first launched by the National Alliance of Faith and Justice in 2000. It is an event observed annually in conjunction with Martin Luther King Jr., Federal Holiday. Justice Sunday honors Dr. King's vocation as well as the critical role played by volunteers of faith during the civil rights movement. As such, it also serves as a campaign to mobilize meaningful volunteerism. Our local Justice Sunday was held January 14 at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center.
The theme for this year's event was Hidden Figures. It is crucial to recognize all those who have paved the way for generations to come, whether in the public eye or behind the scenes. I would like to thank Mayor Emeritus Bishop Henry Hearns for continuing to pave the way and help empower our youth. Henry is always working to strengthen our community, and, in fact, he initiated the City of Lancaster's Martin Luther King Day of Celebration, which grew into our MLK Day of Service. I would like to recognize the many individuals who came together to make the 2018 Justice Sunday here in Lancaster such an impactful and inspiring program. The Antelope Valley ROTC, the Antelope Valley Acapella Choir, the New Buffalo Soldiers, and a number of talented students portraying influential leaders throughout our nation's history. Thank you for your time and participation in creating this very meaningful event. As I call your name, I'd like for you to step up, please, and take your certificate for your accomplishment. The Antelope Valley Acapella Choir. Thank you. The Antelope Valley ROTC. Thank you, congratulations. The New Buffalo Soldiers.
Okay.
We probably want to take a picture, then I'll call the rest of the Justice Sunday people for the Hidden Figures.
I can't do it.
If we can take a picture now, and then I'll call up the rest of Hidden Figures, the people that participated, to get all the kids together. We could get them to take a picture together.
Just tell me what you want to do.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to ask the children that participated in the Hidden Figures in different characterures. First, I have Megan Baker. Is she here?
Let me just make mention of this, Mr. Mayor and to our Councilmember Angela. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you each year, and it has been my honor and has been my pleasure, all the way back in the 80s, to be here. But, to do what has happened here tonight, actually, it was Mr. Holland. He's the guy who really got the kids together and let them pick their own parts, and you will find that the white kids, the black kids, the brown kids, they picked their own parts and they studied them out and they memorized them and did it. So, I just wanted to pass that along to...
Imani John Baptiste. Ashley Barnes. Anisia Burrows. Gabriela Castro. Nathan Ray Chavez. Laverne Coleman. Eugenia Hernandez. Jennifer Sanchez Medina. MicaAngelo Obus. Joseph Ramirez. And Sammy Santiago.
Can we get the principal of Antelope Valley High School to come up with us?
And Ricky.
And can we have Ricky Buller as well?
You guys could all stay. You guys have another award.
If I were you, I'd ask for the cash.
Okay, this is presented from the California State Assembly, and this is being, you guys are being recognized on a state level as well as the city level. So, Eugenia Hernandez. Jennifer Sanchez. Nathan Chavez. Sammy Santiago. Ashley Barnes. Megan Baker. Joseph Ramirez. Gabriela Castro. Laverne Coleman. The Antelope Valley ROTC. You guys could all stay. You guys have another award.
If I were you, I'd ask for the cash.
Okay, this is presented from the California State Assembly, and this is being, you guys are being recognized on a state level as well as the city level. So, Eugenia Hernandez. Jennifer Sanchez. Nathan Chavez. Sammy Santiago. Ashley Barnes. Megan Baker. Joseph Ramirez. Gabriela Castro. Laverne Coleman. The Antelope Valley ROTC. The New Buffalo Soldiers. And the Antelope Valley Acapella Choir. Now, the Antelope Valley Acapella Choir will sing you guys a song, and that'll conclude the presentation.
We had to move right away for the choir. Yeah, we can. Mr. Mayor, we'll move now while the choir can get away. You can hear me.
There comes a tide when we heed a certain call, and the world, they come together as one. There are peoples dying, and it's time we lend a hand to light the greatest gift of all. We can't go on pretending day by day that someone somehow will soon make a change. We are all a part of God's great big family, and the truth, love is all we need. We are the world, we are the children, we are the ones to make a brighter day, so let's start giving. There's a choice making, we're saving our own lives, it's true we'll make a better day, just you and me. We are the world, we are the children, we are the ones to make a brighter day, so let's start giving. There's a choice we're making, we're saving our own lives, it's true we'll make a brighter day, just you and me. It's true we'll make a brighter day, just you and me. It's true we'll make a better day, just you and me.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and to all of you, it is you who have sponsored these programs, it's you who have spent the dollars and sent to come and make this kind of thing happen for our community. And I just stood to say thank you, Lee, Lee Rico, and all of you all who have come together and made sure that the City of Lancaster has stood to the front of the line to make sure that this day is honored in a good kind of way. We were fortunate this year to have two schools involved, one here, of course, the Antelope Valley High School, and the, which one of the schools we had? Highland High School, yeah, there you go. So, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and to God be the glory, God be the glory. Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take three minutes, and if people want to leave, they can, and then we'll get down to business. Or I can make you guys stay here for an hour. Up to you.
They're already out of their seats.
Okay, we're good to go? We're back. City Manager, any items to be removed? No, sir. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor Perez, let the record reflect that I was not present, but I did read the minutes, so I plan to vote on them.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Let's do it, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Consent calendar?
We have no speaker cards on the consent calendar, so I'll make a motion that we...
I gotta, I gotta ruckus myself on CC7, my own property in the area. Right? Okay, do I gotta leave? I guess I gotta leave.
No, hang on one second. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, pulling CC7.
Second that? Let's just do it, boys. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, now, CC7.
I need a motion for CC7.
I'll move that we adopt CC7.
I'll second.
We have a motion second, let's vote.
Ken?
Yeah, I voted.
Wait a minute, Ken forgot to vote.
No, I voted.
Just a moment, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Okay, passes with four yes votes, with the mayor ruckusing himself.
You sure you don't need me to do this?
I, you know, you need to teach Ken how to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, let's take CA item two out, which is nominating Hector Acosta to the Lancaster Homeless Impact Commission. I've been in a trial all month against a Hector Contreras, and I knew that wasn't it. I just had to check. Okay, can we do the appointment today, too?
Yes, we're agendized for a nomination and appointment.
Oh, good. I'm kind of, I'm actually excited about Hector doing this. What the Salvation Army has done out at, out at the old Miraloma facility was just remarkable, and they did it overnight. And, the city's approach to homelessness is going to be different than any other city out there, I think. Isn't that a fair statement? You know, I just spent a month in LA, and every morning I'd walk by this guy who had one leg, the other foot was swollen and red and cracked, and he stayed in one spot the whole time. You know, he was there when I left court at night, he was there in the morning, and we'd give him breakfast on the way to court every day. But, it was beyond my comprehension that that is allowed to exist, to take place. I mean, it was right out of a biblical Good Samaritan scenario, but there wasn't any Good Samaritans. And it, and I didn't understand why, I mean, I wanted to call an ambulance for him, you know, but no one would come, or if they came, they would leave him because we're just so overwhelmed. And I just never want to see that in our city. And, so Hector, fix it.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Consent calendar?
We have no speaker cards on the consent calendar, so I'll make a motion that we...
I gotta, I gotta ruckus myself on CC7, my own property in the area. Right? Okay, do I gotta leave? I guess I gotta leave.
No, hang on one second. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, pulling CC7.
Second that? Let's just do it, boys. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, now, CC7.
I need a motion for CC7.
I'll move that we adopt CC7.
I'll second.
We have a motion second, let's vote.
Ken?
Yeah, I voted.
Wait a minute, Ken forgot to vote.
No, I voted.
Just a moment, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Okay, passes with four yes votes, with the mayor ruckusing himself.
You sure you don't need me to do this?
I, you know, you need to teach Ken how to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you. Homeless Impact Commission. I've been in a trial all month against a Hector Contreras, and I knew that wasn't it. I just had to check. Okay, can we do the appointment today, too?
Yes, we're agendized for a nomination and appointment.
Oh, good. I'm kind of, I'm actually excited about Hector doing this. What the Salvation Army has done out at, out at the old Miraloma facility was just remarkable, and they did it overnight. And, the city's approach to homelessness is, is going to be different than any other city out there, I think. Isn't that a fair statement? You know, I just spent a month in LA, and every, every morning I'd walk by this guy who had one leg, the other foot was swollen and red and cracked, and he stayed in one spot the whole time. You know, he was there when I left court at night, he was there in the morning, and we'd give him breakfast on the way to court every day. But, it was beyond my comprehension that that is allowed to exist, to take place. I mean, it was right out of a biblical Good Samaritan scenario, but there wasn't any Good Samaritans. And it, and I didn't understand why, I mean, I wanted to call an ambulance for him, you know, but no one would come, or if they came, they would leave him because we're just so overwhelmed. And I just never want to see that in our city. And, so Hector, fix it.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Unanimous? Okay. Okay, Hector, you got the job now.
Do you have swear men?
Oh, yeah, we got to swear them in. You got, you got the thing for me to do it? Okay, is the, are the letters big enough for me to read? All right.
It's inside, if you want to use it. Okay.
There's a choice making. What is living our own lives is to make a better day.
Just you and me. We are the world. We are the children. We are the ones who make a brighter day, so let's start giving.
There's a choice we're making. We're saving our own lives. It's true, we'll make a brighter day.
Just you and me.
It's true, we'll make a brighter day.
Just you and me.
It's true, we'll make a better day.
Just you and me.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and to all of you. It is you who have sponsored these programs. It's you who have spent the dollars and sent to come and make this kind of thing happen for our community. And I just stood to say thank you, Lee, Lee Rico, and all of you all who have come together and made sure that the City of Lancaster has stood to the front of the line to make sure that this day is honored in a good kind of way. We were fortunate this year to have two schools involved. One here, of course, the Alavada High School and the, uh... Which one of the schools we had? Hyland High School, yeah, there you go. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to God be the glory. God be the glory. Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take three minutes and if people want to leave, they can, and then we'll get down to business. Or I can make you guys stay here for an hour. Up to you. Okay, we're good to go? We're back. City Manager, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor Perez, let the record reflect that I was not present, but I did read the minutes, so I plan to vote on them.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Let's do it. Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Consent calendar?
We have no speaker cards on the consent calendar, so I make a motion that we...
I gotta, I gotta recuse myself on CC seven, I own property in the area. Right? Okay. Do I gotta leave? I guess I gotta leave.
No, hang on one second. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar pulling CC seven.
Second that? Let's just do it, boys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, now CC seven.
I need a motion for CC seven.
I'll move that we adopt CC seven.
I'll second.
We have a motion second. Let's vote.
Ken?
Yeah, I voted.
Wait a minute, Ken forgot to vote.
No, I voted.
Just a moment, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Okay, passes with four yes votes with the mayor recusing himself.
You sure you don't need me to do this?
I, you know, you need to teach Ken how to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, let's take CA item two out, which is nominating, uh... Here's C two. Hector Acosta to the Lancaster Homeless Impact Commission. I've been in a trial all month against a Hector Contreras, and I knew that wasn't it. I just had to check. Okay. Can we do the appointment today, too?
Uh, yes, we're agendized for a nomination and appointment.
Oh, good. I'm kind of, I'm actually excited about Hector doing this. I, what the Salvation Army has done out at, uh, out at the old Miraloma facility was just remarkable, and they did it overnight. And the, uh... The city's approach to homelessness is, is gonna be different than any other city out there, I think. Isn't that a fair statement? Of, you know, I just spent a month in LA, and every, every morning I'd walk by this guy who had one leg. The other foot was swollen and red and cracked, and he stayed in one spot the whole time. You know, he was there when I left court at night, he was there in the morning, and we'd give him breakfast on the way to court every day. But it was beyond my comprehension that that is allowed to exist, to take place. I mean, it was right out of a biblical Good Samaritan scenario, but there wasn't any Good Samaritans. And it, and I didn't understand why, I mean, I wanted to call an ambulance for him, you know, but no one would come, or if they came, they would leave him because we're just so overwhelmed. And I just never want to see that in our city. And so Hector, fix it.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Verbal?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Unanimous? Okay. Okay, Hector, you got the job now.
Do you have to swear, man?
Oh, yeah, we gotta swear, man. You got, you got the thing for me to do it? Okay, is the, are the letters big enough for me to read?
Hi, Hector Acosta.
Hi, Hector Acosta.
In solemn, sincere, prayer...
In solemn, swear, prayer.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Born in the nation.
Born in the nation.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation free.
That I take this obligation free.
Having a mutual recognition, purpose, and duty.
Without any mental reservation or purpose whatsoever.
That I will faithfully, and will well faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon... Discharge the duties upon, which I am about to...
Everybody takes that, going into the Senate. I wonder how they come to some of their conclusions.
I don't know.
Aren't you, don't you swear to uphold the Constitution?
You're welcome. Now, this...
I'm confused about that. Only parts that you like. Confused about that.
Okay, back to where we were. Okay, PH item one. And I have to recuse myself. I didn't know I owned so much property.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. We have no speaker cards on it?
We don't have speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Ken, can we waive, can we waive the staff report?
Can.
I'll move to waive the staff report then.
It's just the block grants, right? Okay. We have a request to waive the staff report. I need a motion and a second.
I'll move that we adopt PH one, approve the amendment for the community development block grant.
Second that?
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Vote is, uh, four with Mayor Perez abstaining.
Did you close the public hearing?
I just did.
Okay, thank you.
So how did Ken do while I was gone?
He learned to vote.
The button actually worked that time.
Okay, PH two. Any speaker cards?
Um, a few.
The public hearing is now open. We'll hear from Jeff Hogan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council Commission. The item before the City Council tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission's three-to-three split decision denying a conditional use permit for a proposed commercial development proposal at the southeast corner of 20th Street West and Avenue L. At the time of the decision, six of the seven commission seats were filled, and that's the reason why there was a split decision on this item. The proposal also included a general plan amendment and zone change for the project, which was also acted on that same night and approved. Immediately following that decision, the planning, the applicant of the proposal appealed the decision, which was the commission's action on December 18th, 2017. The commercial development includes a gas station, car wash, oil and lube facility, a separate commercial pad, mini mart that's offering off-site sale of beer and wine, which also included a distance waiver for residential. Staff's recommendation tonight is for the City Council to defer the decision back to the Planning Commission for review and reconsideration now that all the Planning Commission's seats are filled and there is now a deciding vote or majority vote. And that concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have anything on this?
Do I? Just to be clear, um, when the action, well, actually, there were two actions taken, as Mr. Hogan pointed out, was to change the land use to commercial purposes, which was approved on a split vote of four to two. And the action for the conditional use permit, which included the waiver of distance requirement and the approval of the alcohol beverage sales, was a split vote on three to three, which meant the vote failed. Our subsequent, um, design of approval of projects will now be considered under one motion and one action item rather than splitting the action item. So commissioners then will have to make a determination of the appropriateness of the project, including any conditional use permit or any waivers, all in one motion rather than splitting it. So, um, it was, you know, at the time, there were only six members, so that's how they voted. Certainly, there's no guarantee of what the action is going to be when it, if, in fact, the City Council refers it back. And according to the way I read the agenda, you can refer it back with or without instruction. So I'm here to listen.
Did it go through Architecture or Design?
This project, I think, was prior to that, so I think the answer is no. But I'm not sure, is it no? It did not.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to point out that it does comply with our design guidelines. Our staff looked at that closely.
That's what I'm afraid of. I mean, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with those design guidelines when it comes to these types of facilities. You know, they're, they're, the light pollution from them, the, I'm just not comfortable. But, you know, I, I get that it's not my job to make those decisions. But that's why we have an architectural and design commission. I mean, you understand my concerns, right?
No, absolutely, and for those in the public, starting in January 1st, we added a new step to the process where projects will go through architectural design. This was prior to that. But yes, it will.
Is there any reason we can't make this go through that process?
If that is the direction, no.
I don't have any problem. I have a, uh... I have a question on, is the changing of the zoning, does that stay?
That's approved by the Planning Commission. It's subject to the City Council's concurrence, but that action's not before you tonight. The action before you is, and the recommendation you're on is to conduct a public hearing and then make a determination on how you should proceed.
That's what I was just checking on, is just because you said you're gonna vote one action this time instead of two. I watched the meeting.
Well, on future projects, if you bring this, if you send this back, we will be considering the conditional use permit and the waiver and the alcohol beverage and everything associated with the conditional use permit, including design. So it's a...
Mayor, my feeling is, if, if the action wasn't taken and we're now past January 1st, I think it would be subject to, obviously, if the applicant wants to proceed, I would think it would be currently subject to the, to where we're at today with Design Review Committee. So I can't see why we wouldn't do that. I know we don't have to do that, but given the time and the place, you know, here we are, not quite the third month of the year, so...
I really like the corner on Kay and 10th Street, that new corner they're building. I thought that that's an example of what we should have been doing before. And I want to see that type of development instead of what we've been seeing in the past. And if the way to do that is to kick it through architectural design, then I think we should do that.
We'll take that direction.
Unless you can do it the way it is now.
We'll have the ADC look at it again, or look at it and see if they can make any more suggestions.
I mean, that's assuming Planning Commission approves it, but I'm not gonna give them any direction.
I didn't hear what you said, Mayor.
I said, you assume, assuming planning what? That's assuming the Planning Commission approves it because I'm not sending it back with any direction. You know, that's why we appointed you guys.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I want good decisions. Hopefully, better decisions than I make. Okay, Linda Vargas?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Linda Vargas, and just wanted to, uh, let you all know about the, uh, the proposition. I'm a, I'm, I'm opposing it. And my reason is because, uh, my family and I, we just bought this house right next to the lot. Okay, last year, August. And we lived in LA, I was born over there. And it's basically my parents' house that we sold. They want to retire, they decided, you know, go ahead and sell the house, we'll buy this house here. So now that we, that we heard about this, it's really gonna damage our neighborhood because of the, um, the license for the alcohol. There's gonna be more crime and just the fumes. And I, I live right next to the lot. Now, if, if, if the one that's, uh, that wants to go ahead and develop that, if he's willing to pay for my house and buy it off, perfect. But I'm talking about a 20-year house that we own, my parents' earnings. They, like I said, they want to go ahead and retire, and now this happens. So I'm just here pleading to, we can't let that happen, not in that lot. And like I said, if he's willing to pay $750,000, $750,000 for my house to build whatever he wants to build, by all means, go ahead. But, you know, if, if, by us having that gas station, it's gonna be, it's gonna be chaos. Violence, you know, alcoholism.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's, there's anything that supports that for, for this type of business. I'm not sure that there isn't, but I'm not sure that there is. But I, I do get what you're saying, and I, I'm wondering, why isn't there some mitigation? I mean, I don't know, I don't know that necessarily they, they should have to buy the house, but they've certainly devalued it, and it seems to me like they, they should be taking that into consideration. I mean, because it wasn't as if it was always zoned for that.
Right.
I mean, you know, they bought the house with a different zoning.
If we would have known, then we obviously wouldn't have bought the house, you know, we wouldn't have wasted money. So, I mean...
You know, we, we teach our lawyers that when you're winning, shut up. I meant that respectfully, okay?
That's my point of view, and, I don't know, I just hope that...
No, she's right.
Good decisions are made.
So what do we do about that?
It's gonna harm everybody, not only myself, but everybody around that neighborhood.
Well, I think it's, I think when you're right next door to it, that's kind of a different situation than...
Not only that, but the fumes, you know, it's, it's hazardous.
I get it. I'm looking at you, Allison, because I want some help here.
So the, the environmental impacts of the project have to be mitigated pursuant to the environmental documentation on the property. However, the law does not provide for monetary compensation.
Perhaps it should.
Indeed, perhaps it should, but as it stands right now, it does not.
Jim?
Fix it.
Pardon?
Fix it. I mean, if, if they approve it, I want, I don't want a family living next door to it with the money that they worked their whole life for to bear the brunt of it.
The commission has recommended the City Council, uh, for a land use zone change, which is now in the City Council, is, is not on your agenda yet. But it would be when staff agendizes it. So... I'll be careful in what I say, but if the City Council does not want the project, then they must deny the zone change and land use.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I want it done responsibly and with the respect of their, of our, for our neighbors, the way neighbors should act.
And, and through the hearing process, we reviewed a number of issues, including that, and all the environmental concerns, and made a recommendation on a split vote of four to two to approve that, considering all of those potential impact. So, um...
Well, I don't know that things have to be yes or no. I mean, I, I think, you know, you can work these things out. Jeff? See if you can get the developer to work with his neighbors, especially that neighbor.
Yes, sir.
Who lives next door.
Yes, sir.
All right? Okay?
Thank you.
And be reasonable. Okay? Thank you.
But Mayor, you, you've indicated you're not giving direction, but you just did.
Yeah, I do that. I think people should be fair. I mean, I...
You know, we thought we were.
Well, I'm not saying you're not, but when I, when I see her come up here and say, "Look, my parents just bought the place next door, and then you changed the zone and put a gas station next to my, my parents' house," I think she's got a right to be upset.
I'm sure she does. I'm not arguing with you, and there were seven other folks who presented their concerns as well.
All right. I'm not saying you did it wrong. I'm just saying if, if, if you want to do this, do it. All right? All right. Bruce Hailstone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Bruce B. Hailstone. I'm a real estate broker and happen to be a neighbor to this project, living between 21st and 22nd West, just north of Avenue L. This project will have an impact on our property as well as the surrounding neighbors. I would like to begin my comments by reading from the website for the City of Lancaster. It's talking about the general plan. The general plan identifies the types of development that will be allowed and general pattern of future development. The plan consists, contains goals, objectives, policies, and specific actions that provide a framework for achieving the community's long-term vision. It goes on to say that all subdivisions, public works, redevelopment projects, zoning decisions, and other various implementation tools must be consistent with the general plan. In order to keep the plan on course, the city must, from time to time, reexamine the goals, objectives, policies, specific actions in order to ensure that the general plan remains in line with the community's priorities. This comes from your website. On the general plan, it still shows as this intersection as being a two-two, not commercial-type zoning. I was here at the Planning Commission, that was held, by the way, within two weeks of Christmas holidays, and for the city to respond in the volume that they did against this project, we had a full house in here. Our words were listened to, but the vote was to change the general plan. And I don't think that a city should, in one meeting, make such a change that affects so many surrounding neighbors without much better exposure and much better timing in allowing the public's true feelings to be heard by those who are making such decisions. As a result, I oppose this kind of development. It's the wrong intersection, and... I'd like the consideration to be reconsidered because this is not the location for such a commercial development. You just heard from a neighbor who will... You just heard from a neighbor who will severely be impacted by the devaluation of her property, their property, as contiguous to this one. And that happens in all commercial development where, when you as a citizen move into our valley, you believe the general plan in its honesty and integrity. What happens?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vern Roberts?
Start off by just clarifying, I'm the previous owner of that piece of property. I sold it to this developer unknowingly. I told I was selling it to a local individual. Anyhow, that's neither here nor there. In the 12 years I believe that I owned that property prior to, I approached the Planning Commission and the City of Lancaster on several occasions to do some, a little something with that property. I want to put in like a little three-unit office or something like that. I was told emphatically, "No. Never going to allow ingress or ingress onto Avenue L commercial-wise. There are CCNRs because that is white fence farms, and there is no sanitation provisions other than septic." I was at the Planning meeting, and I was told, I heard somebody say that, "Oh yeah, we'll just hook up the sewer." I'd like to know what sewer that is. There is no sewer there. And, you know, I had to say, that was that. And then also the fact that somewhere back in my history, I sold real estate for quite a few years ago. Anytime I wanted to get a zone change, the first thing I had to do is get a petition to the neighborhood to get it basically approved that the neighbors even wanted to hear about it. And if that failed, that was pretty much the end of the story. This one seems to be kind of a, "Let's just rush it through" and blindside us, because that's basically what nobody even knew about it until we got a little thing in the mail a week prior. So, I am vehemently, I'm really, I'm against it in the fact that I just don't think it's being done correctly. I don't think anybody's given a fair share, either the people who live there or the developer. I think just, the whole thing just doesn't rest good. So, with that, I will say, thank you.
I don't understand that. I mean, it hasn't passed yet.
I know that. It has not passed yet. Part of it has.
We're probably gonna send it back.
Part of it already been tentatively approved, and the thing being, I sat right here and listened to somebody say, "Oh yeah, we'll just hook up the existing sewer." At the time I thought about doing that, I was told it was gonna be about a million dollars. So, I'm just wondering why all of a sudden all the big urgency when in the last 12 years, the answer was a very emphatic no.
Was there urgency? Is there anything different about how this project has been shepherded through?
Staff looked at the project, you know, it's right across from a commercial development, it's on a major arterial roadway. Those were kind of important factors when looking whether or not it's consistent with the general plan with the zone change of general plan. Staff believed that it was compatible.
The process, Mayor, is no different than any other project that comes before the Commission. I mean, we don't select the projects, the applicants select us. And so we must hear the, you know, and evaluate them. Staff does their part, the Commission does their part and makes their recommendation. So, I mean, we, the city certainly, nor the Planning Department, nor the Commission, is out promoting general plan revisions and zone changes on long-held residential property. But when it comes before us, we have to evaluate it based on the application. So, for folks to say that we're out promoting change, we're not.
Do we have a picture of the Google slide or something?
I don't know if we have. I don't believe we have it. We'll try to hook it up. We may not. We'll get you a hard copy of it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Lee Horsham. First, let me apologize, I was barefoot making dinner, and my wife said you're going to the meeting, so I put on my flip-flops and here I am.
Oh, but...
We live on L4, almost catty-corner to this project. L, and then L4 is 2/10 miles south, we're three doors in. We have horses, we have mules. This is all equestrian property. Whether or not the people have equestrians or not, it's all equestrian property. Our neighbors live down the street on L with horses, and you want to put a commercial building in our neighborhood? Yes, there's a commercial building across the street, it's dead. It used to be the Ralphs, before that it was the Hughes. It has a dry cleaners and a nail shop, I think. The donut shop closed, the restaurant closed, the restaurant closed, the grocery store's gone. It's basically a dead center. And now you want to put another commercial building thing right across. And yes, there's no sewer, because we're all on septic. And anything that goes into there goes into our groundwater, and we're white fence farms means we have to get the groundwater to drink. So, no, I don't want the zoning changed, and I don't want a commercial facility put there that's gonna cause more traffic. When there is a wreck on Avenue L, L4 turns into a freeway, and L4 is a private, not city-maintained road, and I guarantee we can't close it off because it's been open for too long. And 15th Street West, which is a dirt road, turns into a freeway between L and M. We don't need more reasons for people to drive traffic around our neighborhood. Please. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I saw this man grow up. This is my 50th year at the college, and I've lived 47 years in my residence that's gonna be practically right across the road. I have basically one message. I'm going to ask the first question, I want you to think about, why? Why did you put the camera on that road, L and 20th? Why was that, why did you choose? Because it's a dangerous road.
I thought it was because they needed to take a picture of me running the red light talking on my cellphone.
Well, I am saddened to hear all the screaming and yelling from accidents. I have two student aides right now in my classroom helping me. Both of them have had, young ladies, if you see one of them now, she's all scarred up in her forehead, she had an accident there on that corner.
It's a terrible intersection.
Yeah. And then I have another lady who's also had an accident there. My wife and son had an accident there. And this goes on and on. And what was most shocking presently, there were two young men, one, they were both on Avenue, on Avenue L. One was on the west side, and one was on the east side, right almost in front of this business. And every morning and every evening, I come home, especially around when business lets out. It's horrible. The cars are going 80, 90 miles an hour to make the light. And I pray every day that no one gets hurt, but these two young men were killed. Now, we're over half through with their life, probably most of us in this room.
A little over half, Rich.
And their life was cut off at 20. Don't we have some responsibility to clean up that intersection, to make it safe? This business is gonna make it worse. I know what sorrow is.
Hold on, I'll hold your time, but what are the improvements they're doing to 20th South of the intersection? Anything?
Our engineering team's not here, but I believe that there is a median or a separation south of 20th. So, there's gonna be improvements at that intersection to help control the traffic. And actually, the commercial development will only have a right-in, right-out on Avenue L, so there won't be any...
So, what was the effect of the development of 30th and L on the residents? Anything?
30th and L?
Yeah, didn't they put a wall grins or something there?
Oh, yeah, that was a while ago, I'm sorry. They went through some mitigation, there is a right-turn and right-out, and if you're familiar with that, I use that. There's a very long entrance that you have to go in, so that was all intended to not overburden the intersection. And then there's a wall and landscaping between that business and the residence to the east.
Yeah, right there. So, have we done any surveys of the neighborhood to see what the impact was?
Of this, the 30th and L?
Yeah, it just seems to me that it was, it's more densely populated than 20th and L.
I don't know, we could find out if, I doubt we did after surveys, I haven't heard any, there's been no reports that I've heard of complaints of it, but we could certainly look at it again.
It occurs to me that the developer just really hasn't done a lot of community outreach on this.
You did do a traffic survey on 10 different intersections around there, was that one of them?
The developer?
Yeah.
If, I believe, well, that would've certainly been one if the developer did it. I'm not familiar with all of them. I do remember there was a lot. I think these are the issues that were discussed the first time and will be discussed again at the Planning Commission, which is the impacts on traffic and such as well, too.
I did watch the Planning Commission, it was on this and the one on, I think it was 22nd or 23rd, there was another project on there, and there's a big concern about the traffic and the speed. Can we ask the captain just to slow the traffic down or to enforce it?
That's what we need, we need another bike path.
Well, the bike paths have reduced fatalities by 47%.
I agree, I agree, but you don't have to take the heat for it.
No, we take it, but it's the right thing to do.
It is the right thing to do, but I'm the guy they get to call stupid over it, so...
That's true.
And I apologized. What?
I said, "We will certainly," I think the idea of 30th and L is a good idea because there was a huge uproar at that location, and we can see what we've had since then.
Mayor, if I may speak, I was on the Planning Commission, in fact, I think I was the chairman when, at 30th and L, I can't speak about the Toms that's out there, because I think that was done since I've been on the council, but the McDonald's there, you'll notice that backs up against the housing. It used to be, when we were growing up, if you recall, it used to be a house that used to be on that corner, and I'm trying to remember the family that owned it. But I remember that was a pretty lengthy process that we went through. And you can see how it's buffered. I don't know if you can make out, see the McDonald's to the left, it's got a landscape buffer that's pretty dense. I think it's either a 15-foot buffer, and it's fenced, too. So, it's very difficult to get in there. And I know that there was a lot of controversy about noise, specifically at the time, I think we approved it without a drive-through, and then they came back. I'm not quite for sure now all the details. But that'd be interesting to find out from the neighborhood.
Why would you bump up the one corner to commercial and leave the corner across the street residential?
At this location?
Yeah.
The corner across the street on the southwest corner?
Right there, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
No?
You're talking about the southwest corner?
Yeah, right there.
It's inhabited.
That is a commercial use.
Oh, is it?
Currently.
All right, so it is commercial.
No, it's not a commercial zone, it's a residential zone with a commercial use. In that area, you're allowed to have...
Is that your house, Rich?
No.
You're further south, right?
The Sims houses, the next one down.
I'm on the southwest.
Next one down, right?
I'm on the southwest. I have five acres there. It goes back to, you know, the 21st Street. And it's unapproved, you know, it's rough roads. And I have a hard time, I could not turn left, I had to wait for like 5, 10 minutes there. I have, and closing, I need to step back, because there's other people to talk. But one last thing, I challenge the council, the mayor, and the police, anyone to come Monday morning, early, and see the 80, 90, and I have, I even thought about getting a speedometer so that I could check out how fast they were really going, but it's between 80 and 90 miles an hour. Would you want your child driving that street or walking across the street? I've tried to cross the street many times, and you have to wait and wait, and then sometimes I never got across, because it's the traffic. The traffic's immense there, especially during business and then people coming home. I'd like all the Planning Commission to go there and spend some time, like maybe two hours during that traffic, and then two hours at night, just watching, and you can have your little speedometer and see how fast people are traveling. I know what sorrow is. I had my son die of a drunk driver. And he was 18, he was going on his junior year at UCLA. He was Ball-Victorian at Quartz Hill, gone. And I see so many young people that get in really bad accidents because they're inexperienced, perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, I mean, you could tell me. I don't see how letting that particular project go forward is going to increase the traffic speeds. If anything, it would lower it, wouldn't it?
But regardless of whether it increases or decreases, there still is a problem on that street that needs to be slowed down.
Oh, I agree. It's a killer intersection, kills a lot of people. Do you need, do you need trouble?
How are you?
I'm good, thank you very much, and thank you for listening to our concerns, all of you. And technology folks, thank you very much for bringing the map up, it helps a lot. Could I get you to put the cursor on Avenue L, the south side, where the exit will probably be from the property, when it's, if it is developed? No, it would be Avenue L. Yeah, up, yeah, there, okay. Now, that is, if you're turning, okay, suppose you're northbound on 20th, and you make a right-hand turn to go to the freeway. No one's mentioned the fact that this is a major road to get you onto the freeway, 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning. Okay. Somebody who turns right from 20th West, not realizing how fast the cars are, even when they are going just 50, will, since there's only two lanes, they will be in the path of a very fast-traveling car, and that was what caused one of the fatalities. I see a lot of ambulances on this road. It is one that goes over the railroad track. It was carefully designed, along with Avenue H, so there would be access between east and west, not having to wait for traffic on Sierra Highway. Okay. So, if there is an increase in accidents, and that's exactly what I see because of the speed getting to the freeway, getting to work in Los Angeles, ambulances are gonna be delayed, people won't make it to the hospital on time, and, you know, that impacts us older folks, because we are the ones who are very likely to be a matter of concern. The freeway is the control here that makes people think, "I have to go, I have to make this light to get to the freeway." And we need to be very aware, no matter what mitigation is done, the freeway is still there, and people deal with it. And people deal with it. Not in such good manners necessarily, but let's try to be realistic and remember what we did with Avenue L to make it accessible across the railroad tracks for emergency vehicles. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shelley Hurl.
My property is 1742 West Avenue L.
Can you...
Bring it up just a little bit. There's the pool, the house, the garage. Bring it out just a little bit because of the back. All the back there? Okay, there you go. Now, you can see there is stables there. There are stables directly this way. And then all of those houses have stables. Now, where they want to build, I just don't think it's going to be... The building of this project, I just don't see it being a good fit for an equestrian neighborhood that is so densely populated with horses that we're already putting up with the freeway noise. We already have to deal with the traffic in front of us. We're allotted our own acreage to ride on and prepare our horses for whatever we want to do. We're not allowed to go on the access for the water to access any other place to ride. So all we have is the backyard. Any horses... If you're right on Avenue L, like my horses are, the only relief they have is my house. Otherwise, every night, they see a river of lights. And then, again, in the morning, a river of lights. My husband was not able to be here. He's a land surveyor for LA County for over 30 years. He is opposed to this. He said so at the last meeting. It is a non-appropriate place. I agree with him. I'm opposed to it. I don't think that he... This management can buy up enough property to satisfy everybody to make... Unless they would like to do that, I would be more than happy to move my horses in. But even if I move in one lot, I just can't imagine the sound just from constructing such a project, that would be. It would be massive. And not only will you have cars and people, you know, forget about already what we have, you're going to have possible livestock involved here. I mean, I just can't imagine what could happen. Is there any questions before I go?
No, I think you did it very well. Thank you. And I love the River of Lights. Well-crafted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Your parish council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I go by that intersection every week when I go to church. I go down 20th toward Avenue M to my church. It's very rural. And even at 11 o'clock, when you get out of church to get back on 20th, you have to be careful. It's just a country two-lane highway. I think that, you know, you've heard the people in the neighborhood, this project should be DOA. However, in fairness to the man that wants to open a retail establishment, the city should try to work with the owners of the shopping center that's mostly vacant where Ralph was, and see if something could be arranged so that he could open a retail establishment in that shopping center for the convenience of the people in the neighborhood who are missing a store because Ralph left. I don't know if the city can do that, but they could work with him to make sure his dreams come true. But also, I've walked in those neighborhoods on the other side of the street going north. They're nice neighborhoods, and I don't believe that we want an establishment in that area selling beer and wine. But on the other hand, they could use an establishment in the old Ralph Shopping Center area as a convenience so they don't have to travel to Albertson's and Schede Brothers for bread and milk. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment. Is there a motion to defer it to the Planning Commission?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer the project back to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, would you please close the public hearing?
Oh, the public hearing is now closed? And we're not sending this with direction. This is a tough decision. That's why people got appointed. And I want them to make the best decision they can that takes into account everybody's... All right? Got it? Good. Thank you. Let's vote. Talk to the Planning Commission. I would also suggest that the neighbors and the developer get together, see if there's a solution. Okay? Thank you. All right. New Business Item 1. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
You have a burning desire to present?
All right. With that, then...
We'll wave it. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1038.
Second that. Let's vote. CA1, is there a speaker card?
Robert Schaefer. Roger Schaefer.
This is to approve a reward of $10,000 for information leading to the arrest and conviction of persons responsible for the shooting death of Mr. John Rue, unemployed at the Drive-Thru Dairy in the 44000 block of Division Street.
I want to thank Mark... My name's Roger Schaefer. But I want to thank Mark for not letting me get involved in that one. He saved about... I was on seven of these hit lists tonight, and one of them was to vote against these guys. And now they've convinced me, and maybe this is not a good project. I just wanted to... I'm pro-business, and I just, you know, want more business, more money coming into the city, so... Let's get to CA1. I made two drafts. My first draft, most citizens would come forward without seeking reward for getting a criminal off the street, especially a murderer. This is not why I'm in opposition to CA1. My main reason is, we do it for one citizen, and we must do it for all. I feel we are rubbing shoulders with words such as bribery, extortion, and enticement. These are criminals out there that would throw their own mother under the bus for $10,000, even if the mother was innocent. This is a bad policy to get started unless the citizens of Lancaster vote to send. My question, does the city reward everyone that gives information to the arrest and conviction of a murder victim within our city limits? If the answer is no, then what justifies the city in paying a reward for one victim and not paying for the other victim? I thought about it, and I wrote a second draft. I've thought of another way to raise reward money to innocent murder victims. Instead of a government forcing the constituency to pay, surely we can do it on a volunteer basis. I will be the first tonight to put up $100 for the arrest and conviction of a murderer that is brought to justice committing this cowardly act, not just in Lancaster, but all of Antelope Valley. On April 9, 2014, the Antelope Valley Times reported Marvin Chris and Ron Smith were winners. Marv had 4,052 votes. Ron had 3,874 votes. Out of a population of, say, 150,000, only 14,708 people voted. That is about 1%. Therefore, that puts them in the 1-percenter gang like the Hells Angels, no pun intended. Bottom line, if 1% of our population would only offer $1 to catch murderers, we would have the reward money. Folks, it is not going to happen, for most people are not like our mayor. They'll put his money where his mouth is. If you could find another 199 Lancaster citizens to give $100 each, then we'll have $20,000 to match the county's rewards. Maybe we could even talk to state reps to put in up 60 grand, and that would give us 100 grand. And now the snitches that didn't even know they were snitches, they'll come out for 100 grand, guaranteed. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get Marvin a patch, 1%? Maybe put it on his name down here?
We can Photoshop anything on him.
These are the two 1 percenters up here.
Thank you for that.
I will treasure the 1% for quite a while now. Okay.
No, I know you're against bikers better. Remember the ones you kicked out there three, four years ago? Those Mongols? Mongols, yeah. I never forgot that one.
Neither has my wife.
I still talk about how much you had, you know? I don't want to say it, but you had a... You had some nerve.
At our age, what are they going to take from us, huh? Okay. Is there a motion?
I have a question. Usually when we do that, this is to entice the extra knowledge to come forward. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, Daryl gets upset when I call it a bounty.
That is true.
Okay. So, but we're enticing the...
Yeah, our process, if I may, we only recommend a reward when the Sheriff's Department, through the Sheriff's Captain, says it would be helpful. The Sheriff's Department did request of the county and Lancaster to consider it, and that's why we do it. It is in the context of to generate additional information that may not be there. We don't do it very often at all.
Should we and could we put a time limit on it?
The time limit de facto is arrest and conviction. You could certainly put a day or a month or other time limit.
Well, the enticement is to hurry up and get the information. Eventually, they will get caught, eventually. And then someone will come forward and say it. But we want them off the street as soon as possible. If we put a time limit on it, I think it would hurry it.
I've never heard of it done that way. It makes sense. But just in general, to answer the question, if I may, regarding rewards and why they don't always ask for them. And we work with the homicide detectives and homicide team lieutenant. A reward always isn't advantageous in an investigation. And no one knows the case better than the investigator as to when he thinks or she thinks that they're at a point where they think reward will help. Because you always run the risk of people bringing false information in or bad information in that clutters the investigation. So they weigh the fact of what do we have? How much workable information do we have? And when will... When is that scale tipped to where the risk of bringing bad information has outweighed the risk of... Or balance against what they actually have? In this case in particular, they called me Tuesday morning immediately and asked me to contact the city manager regarding this case in particular, and it was based on the information they had, if that makes sense.
It does. I think that we should get them off the street as soon as possible. We can always put a time limit on it and then renew it if it's necessary.
Put a six-month renewal on it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the $10,000 with a six-month renewal limit on it.
That's six months to bring the information in, not to obtain the conviction, correct?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Let's vote. Unanimous. Okay. Mr. Christ?
Things are going well at AV Transit Authority. We've got reports today that we should receive all our electric buses by the end of 2018. You weren't here, but we did at the last meeting report that we are doing bus service, and I have to give you credit for that, to Mojave and to Edwards, that we... You gave us instructions to accomplish that, which we've done. And they have individual van service, so we're doing a pilot program of five and five each. So it's going well.
And make sure we monitor that and see how well it's working. And we're working with the companies?
Absolutely. They showed up at the board meeting. We did talk with them, and AVTA is going to monitor them because we'll be looking for further grants to fund more vans and everything for it. So our objective is actually to provide vans to the hotels. The hotels will have them. The AVA QMD will put the infrastructure in the hotels, so they will have an incentive to stay at those hotels. And then the drivers will get it, be able to drive the vans for free, but the passengers will actually pay, and then we'll get a per diem from the federal government on that. So it looks very good.
Thank you.
That was quick movement, too. I mean, it didn't take two years to do it.
No, they're very good over there. They're, you know, they're almost... Have a good staff over there, is almost as good as the city of Lancaster. The attorney is so-so, though.
We were also told by a community member...
Does she spend her time texting at the meetings there, too?
Yes, yes, yes.
Go ahead.
We were also told by a community member today that the seniors are very appreciative of lowering the age limit from 65 to 62 for free ridership.
I mean, I can ride free now.
Yeah, so can Marv, I think, too.
But before, couldn't I?
Marv, yeah.
You and Ken have been able to ride for years, but I just qualify. Thank you for that. And I need to point out, because Mr. Molly has gone to several of the veterans' projects, and when he went to them, they were unaware that veterans can ride for free. We are one of the only bus services that allows veterans, seniors, handicapped, and school students to ride for free. So I think if we could put that out in our newsletter, Mark, to do something, it would be good, let them, as far as the e-blast and the newsletter. I think that more... I talked with some students over the weekend, and they were unaware of it also. So we need to get more publicity out there.
We will do that.
So plus, like, we are... I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, college students, this will make sure that piece on there.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll get from AVTA the specifics, and we'll just have them do it, and we'll put it out in our e-news. Thank you.
Any council reports?
We do have the AVA QMD reports. I think that we did some grants for some different buses. The different buses allow us to replace buses that are being timed out or by AB32. So that bill said that those buses need to be off the streets by 2020. So that bill said that those buses need to be off the streets by 2023, so we're working on that. And we have been able to replace 179 buses by doing that, to help them through those different plans. So we did that at this last meeting also.
So the churches are getting buses for those, right?
Well, it's not only the churches, but the school districts are getting buses. We're allowing them to change their traps, but we're not looking at any difference between the churches nor the general public. So the schools are getting them. We're just working to replace the... Our mission statement there is to actually clean the air. So we're allowing them to do that, but we're not making a difference between church and state.
Okay. We had a meeting yesterday with the two deputy mayors, Cassandra Harvey and Marvin Kropke.
And the vice mayor.
And the vice mayor. I was going to get to you, Marvin. Don't worry. You're okay. Could we get some counseling for the council?
You should take me first.
You're right. I should have. I apologize. Anyway, and the IBW and Northrop and Lance campers and the Annalite Valley College. And the purpose of the meeting is we have this incredible opportunity where people can actually get jobs that are going to pay a lot of money, and nobody's applying. And especially women are not applying. They have this ability to train people with, what is it, eight weeks now? Is the Northrop training eight weeks?
They have an eight-week certificate program that was amazing.
Yeah, and in eight weeks, they're now, they're almost guaranteed a job over at the aircraft facilities, and they're high-paying jobs. And the only thing I can think of is the reason that women aren't applying is because they're just not aware of it. We also discussed the issue of childcare and things of that, and we're going to be directing people to work on those issues. And it seems like the only barrier to getting these jobs is the criminal record aspect of it, and there doesn't seem to be anything we can do to rectify that. But certainly people without criminal records who can get through the background check for the security clearance, I mean, this is unbelievable.
Let me correct you on that, because BYD has a 40%.
That's right. That's right. I forgot about BYD. 40% of the BYD employees are at-risk employees. I don't think the pay is quite as high as the aircraft.
It's not as high, but they do have jobs, and we've worked that out with BYD for them to be able to hire these people that can't find jobs anywhere else. So that's actually in their contract with the labor unions, and it's the first time that actually the education people and the unions and the industry are all working together. It's a good time in the city of Lancaster. We're at 4.2% unemployment. So with that unemployment, we're just looking to see if we can get women more jobs. That's where we're at right now. We're at a good place.
Now, you know, the statistics are somewhat deceptive in that LA County is at about 4% now, aren't they? The problem is, is they're low-paying jobs. These are not low-paying jobs. These are actually middle-class jobs that are now available, and that's not going to be there forever. And I'm just really concerned that a lot of people who could benefit from this aren't getting the message. And the education's free. You're not going to be encumbered with student loans. IBW is developing a training program that you're going to be, have a union construction... I mean, they pay good money, I mean incredibly good money, and they do the training.
You might want to talk about the helmets-to-hard hats that IBW has, as far as for veterans.
I would love to talk about that if I knew what you were talking about.
Okay, IBW, the labor contractors are actually using the, it's called helmets-to-hard hats, where they take veterans and actually put them right when they get out and put them under training, and they go right into a job at that point, and they call it helmets-to-hard hats. So I think that about 24% of IBW's workforce is designated for veterans. So it's a great program. We've been trying to do this with the schools, with the college, with everything, as far as getting them to develop programs that makes all this happen. So I think it's a good partnership.
That's all I have. City clerk. Oh, wait a minute. Did I, I skipped over everybody, didn't I? City manager?
Yes, sir. Three things. Number one, people should realize that citizen activism and involvement matters. People have looked at this council meeting, and they've seen a lot of times the folks that are impacted by Cal Water come up here, well, through the mayor, vice mayor, and the rest of the council. They were allowed to use this council chambers, organize a meeting. They did a great job. They got people from San Jose here. As Jason pointed out, it looks easy to run a meeting. They sort of stumbled a little bit at the beginning, but really were able to get their message out. And because of that and because of representatives here representing both Assemblyman Lackey and Senator Wilk on the last day to put legislation in, they both co-authored with other members SB 1461, which would look to restrict the return that private water companies could have. This starts the discussion, and it started right here in Lancaster with the people in the Cal Water. So it was a very proud moment for Lancaster and the people involved, and they should be very proud of the effort and the hours they put in to do that meeting. It was really something to see. I had the honor of representing Lancaster at a meeting last week up in Oakland. It was actually in the Marin area, and it was a group of, it's called SEFI, but it's a group of legislators, assemblymen, senators, a lot of people in the energy industry. And the point that set Lancaster apart, and I had 20 people come up and say this to me, was while everyone was just talking about what's the best kind of power to buy and what should the requirement be for bundle one, two, or three energy, we were able to say what we did with our CCA is we helped with 100% bus fleet, electric buses, bought our streetlights. We're the first in the state to put a net-zero ordinance, which could not have been done without Lancaster Choice Energy, and have put incentives in place to attract companies like BYD to expand. And it was stark how we were set apart from everyone else who just talks about something. So really proud to be part of this team, and you guys should take, as mayor and council, a lot of pride in that we are truly leading the state in doing things and not just talking about it. Really a good moment. Lastly, we have the Board of Trade, which we will have this Friday, the Board of Trade Conference. The focus is on small business, so we thought we would do a short video on one of our small businesses that has weathered recessions and everything. It's AV Sports and Graphics. For those of you who have not been there, Ray Hacker is the owner. Every other sporting goods store in the valley has the exact same things. These guys have everything on earth, from every team on earth, from every era, and it's a treasure trove for a sports fan. So I have a short, three-minute video.
If you're looking to buy trophies, Little League uniforms, or even a Kobe Bryant jersey, AV Sports and Graphics is definitely your place.
How long have you been in the Annalite Valley?
I went to most of the elementary schools back in the days, Parkview, and high school played football, baseball, and basketball. When we were at college, I got a degree in engineering and went to work for McDon Douglas and Northrop. There wasn't a baseball card shop in the Annalite Valley 31 years ago, and baseball cards were starting to really get popular, and we opened this store three or four months after I graduated from college. We'd have lines of people waiting for me to sell to them, and people started coming in and saying, hey, can you get a Dodger this, or can you get this? We carry 32 NFL teams. You go to most stores, they're only going to carry the four or five most popular teams, so they know they can come in here and find anything they want.
We get a quick tour of this place?
Absolutely. Come on, we'll show you around. A plethora of all your sports fan products. Letterman jackets right through here. We have 18 high schools that we bring in over here.
18 high schools?
Yeah, can you believe that? Back in the day, there were three of them out here, four with paraclete, you know, so that's grown a little bit.
Who does the embroidery?
We do it all in-house right here.
That's beautiful.
They deck the jackets out a little bit more than what you and I did when we were in school.
A little bit. Look at that. Spike it, rip it, slam it, bulldog.
We carry a lot of old-school jerseys. Aaron Rodgers, Brady is very popular. We still sell a lot of Brett Favre stuff.
It all started with baseball cards.
It all started right here with baseball cards.
You still have them.
I still have some of them right here, so a lot of the old-school cards and everything else. Some of the older cards are still holding their value, some of the new stuff wasn't.
Holding their value? $850 for Roberto Clemente?
Yeah, the condition and everything else dictates the price and the rarity of the card. One of my favorite ones right here, Roy Campanella. That's a jersey from the late '40s, early '50s, right there.
Tell me about the Dodgers. You had to sell a lot of stuff this year.
Yeah, we had a lot of products this year. So this is what the players got. This is the hat they actually wore on the field right there. We would have sold a lot more if they would have taken that game seven, just as the Yankees. It would have been the greatest for us to have the Yankees and the Dodgers in it, but both of them lost game seven. So you could have had the Yankees and Dodgers first time since 1978. 7,000 different hats here. Some of these hats that we carry in here are original from 1988, 1989 and stuff.
Oh, are you serious?
It's still a small-town community that's grown through the years, obviously, you know, but we still have so much camaraderie and fellowship in the community that people still care about each other, you know? They like that small-business mentality.
Thank you. Anything else? How's our television station coming?
Improvements. We're going to have the first of the news shows launched within a month. And then once a month after that.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk, your announcements.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. I want to thank you, First Mayor, for putting Hector Acosta on the homeless commission. I've spoken with him at many meetings. He's a great guy. The one thing that, when you were talking about kicking it back to architectural design and everything, we have a little problem getting a quorum. I'm noticing the postings on the board, and some of these things are pushed out till April. The March one's already canceled because we can't get a quorum. So that's there. The other thing I wanted to say, Vice Mayor Christ, this week, I'm setting up, helping set up the library for our sale next week, but when these things happen, there's lots of people come through, and I'd be glad to put up a poster or a sign that says that veterans ride the buses for free or something like that, if that's okay. And other than that, there's a great conference, Dr. Amen is his name, he's a psychiatrist, and they're having a brain study thing. You go, just search online, it's an event that you watch on your computer, but it talks about all this stuff in neuroscience and brain science that's coming to help people recover from even Alzheimer's. There's hope that people can recover from that. So that's very inspirational, but it talks about the human brain, and Amen talks about the brain doesn't develop in males until they're 28 years old, and yet we send the kids to war because the process risks differently. So this is very interesting to know what actually helps. One of the things he said, one of his comments, he saw Dudley Moore talk about what builds character in people, and that's to learn how to respect the law, and the best thing is to have a patrol car in your rearview mirror as you're driving. So some of these solutions we're looking for for traffic have to do with educating people a little bit differently and realizing that some people just need more specific training to get out there and operate these motor vehicles. I mean, I've long wanted people to learn to respect the law through respecting each other through driving. So that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, David.
I picked the non-agenda stuff in case I shorted myself on my other speaking, and I did, because you missed the premise of the question that I left out on my reward item. Does the city reward everyone that gives information to the arrest and conviction of a murder victim within our city limits? If the answer is no, then what justifies the city in paying a reward to one victim and not paying for others? Okay, I don't want to answer that one. I just want to make my non-agenda statement. And this is to the sheriff. I'm going to talk about him. Our public safety is one of the highest costs of each year's budget. We pay approximately $25 million a year for a 300-person sheriff department, which averages to about $83,000 for each person, cheap for those risking their lives for our safety. Here's a statistic I found, eye-opening. Out of 7,282 Lancaster arrests last year, there were only 192 felony arrests. Therefore, if you do the math, it will show you we paid approximately $126,000 for each felony arrest. This is one way to put it. Let's put it in a different light. Wonder if by getting those felons off the streets that our sheriffs saved one life for each arrest? Think of your friends and your family. Certainly, they're worth $126,000 each, you think? My great-grandfather, if he were alive today, he would have voted for one sheriff count and may allow the old vigilante system. For sure, the good people would be carrying the guns. Thank you.
You can answer my question, though, because I want to know if we do it for one, we've got to do it for all of them, or we're going to get a discrimination case.
We do it when it's effective, and, you know, that's up to...
What if I told you that my uncle was murdered 20 years ago over in Cortez Hill, and they still, they did put a bit of money on him, and they haven't found, hey, his is a murderer, so why isn't he as good as this Don Aru guy? See what I'm talking about? If you've got to do it for one, you've got to do it for all. It's not that much money.
I've never adhered to that.
Never what?
I've never adhered to that, that you do it for one, you've got to do it for all. I don't know why that's accurate.
Or you don't believe that's...
No, I don't.
Really?
I think there's certain types of murders that are more important. We get the guy who did it. I think if when it's young people that's killed, the reward should be higher. Be different.
We got our own opinions.
I like saying controversial things.
Daryl cringed.
All right. Where are we at? Any comments from the council?
I said it's always good to...
Something controversial.
I said it's always good to have an equalizer sitting amongst us. Thank you, Daryl.
Anything else?
Yeah, we did go to the Ellison John Prentisner of Care Facility that opened. It's a, I think, I believe it's 170-bed facility. One of our planning commissioners are highly involved in it. Diana Cook is highly involved in it. She asked us to go, and a great facility. So me and Raj did go over to that. We also attended the Desert Christian School fundraiser, and we attended the water board meeting. It was about a three-hour meeting for the Cal Water, and I still feel bad for those people that we can't do more.
What happened to the idea of holding hearings and subpoenaing their butts down here and cross-examining them for a while?
Right now, we're facilitating this process for the constituents.
We, right now, we're facilitating this process for the constituents themselves to take this on and this legislative process that they're taking, which is most likely to be an effective result. But if that doesn't have the result we want, we certainly can still come back to the legislative subpoena.
All right. Thank you. Okay. That's it.
You might want to ask the planning commissioner if they have good comments.
I'm afraid to ask. I'm I'm but I'm you're not afraid of me, and you know that, just like I'm not afraid of you, right? All right. What do you got? Actually, I have no further comment. Thank you.
Very good. Equalizer. Turn your mic on.
Actually, I'm really glad that you were talking about the job benefit that's going on in the city. I just had a meeting with Mark, and that was one of the concerns that we were talking about. I was watching the Fed Chairman this morning, and even though the economy all around is doing really well, the African-American community is still almost three to one for whites to black. And a lot of the politicians were grilling the Fed Chairman, what can we do to erase that gap between African-Americans and non-whites with the gap in working? So it's similar to the same thing here. I heard you say all these jobs are here. A lot of the pastors that I've I've been talking to is still a overlaying theme that a lot of men out here cannot find work. And one of the things that I was talking to our city manager about was maybe it's because of the types of jobs they are, whether they're highly skilled jobs, whether they're jobs that do not hire felons, that some of these men are messed up early in their lives. So I like what I heard that you guys are doing, and I want to find a way that we can get that information out. People like my churches, some of the pastors that I talk to that have 1,000 members, 500 members, you know, that that's a lot of people that you touch. When you touch pastors, you're touching hundreds of thousands of people, and that information can assimilate quickly and get out there quickly. And I just don't think that that information is assimilating as well as it could within the city. And I would like to see that just a little bit better. And I'm glad that our city is doing something about that, because our church just took on a family this week. African-American family that's living in their van, and they're members of my church, and I didn't know it. And we, right on the spot, raised them enough to be in a hotel for two weeks until we find out what's going on. I just got a call that he got hired at BYD. So that was it was it was just exhilarating for me to hear that. So I I I'm excited for what Raj and, you know, our vice mayor is doing. And I'm hoping that that, you know, information gets out and gets out strong, and I'm hoping that the city can utilize all aspects of getting that information out. I think a lot of times our African-American churches are not getting the information as well as they should, and I'm going to do a better job myself when I hear the information to get it out there. Because I do know that while the economy is doing better, the African-American race at times tends to lag with what's going on with the trend. So I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
Let's let's develop a 10-minute presentation, right? And let's figure out who we want to do it. But let's do a 10-minute presentation that tells people what's available, what they have to do to get into into the stream, you know, to get in the process. And with dates and completion times and, I mean, but here's the package, and we're going to have to have something, some visuals with it, you know, written material to go with it. But, yeah. And it is a sin to have this type of resource out there, and we're not getting people to take care of it, I mean, to to become aware of it. I mean, it's just a sin. I don't know. I don't think any of us thought 10 years ago or six years ago that we would be in this position. We need to take advantage of it better.
Yeah, mayor, maybe maybe some testimony as well, you know, with some of the people that have gone to work for BYD. Might help, too, based on what.
I agree. I think it has to be somebody other than us. Okay, good. All right. Figure out who's going to do that, Mark, would you? And with the completion date?
Yeah, we're going to get right on it as a top priority. I don't know how long it'll take, but it's not going to take that long to do.
Okay, good. Anybody, anything else? Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home, whether you want me to or not. 2018 at 5:00 PM. See you all there.